All right, hold up for order. Um. Make sure for your own business. If you identify are the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God. And this is all liberty and justice.
Chair Cameron Cárdenales.
President.
Vice Chair Erin Todd is absent. Commissioner Ashley Connolly.
Present.
Commissioner Derek Farage.
Present.
Commissioner Alex Flores.
Present.
Thank you.
Move on to item four, consent calendar, um, four A. Meetings of our August twenty seventh Planning Commission Special Meeting. Do I have a motion or any comments on those? Have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from our August twenty seventh meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Passes four zero. Um, item five, oral communication, this opportunity for the citizen's presentation or comments not related to the agenda items, but within the responsibility of Filmore Planning Commission. Um, speakers be limited to five minutes, we don't have any speaker cards this morning. So we'll move on to item six, the public hearing. Um, six A will open the public hearing. Um, six A consideration modification number two to development permit number eleven dash zero six and conditional use permit number eleven dash zero five and lot merger LM twenty five dash zero one, all for the expansion of ABC preschool and daycare facility and finding of sequoia categorical exemption.
Thank you Chair, good evening, uh, good evening Commission and City of Filmore, I'm Brian McCarthy, be presenting this item. As mentioned, this is the ABC Kids Preschool and Childcare at eight zero eight River Street. It's a modification two to their existing entitlements, development permit eleven zero six, conditional use permit eleven zero five, and there's a lot merger as newly proposed. Um, overall gist of the project is it's a remodel of an existing building. They'll add a new classroom building and ancillary, ancillary facilities. They'll reconfigure the site and they'll expand the uses of the existing preschool and daycare facility. So it's an existing use, just expanding. The location is, as I've mentioned, eight zero eight River Street, it's at the corner of River, Surrey Way and Santa Fe. The zoning is RPDM residential medium and it's allowed and it's a permitted use in this zone. The surrounding neighborhood consists of predominantly single family residential and then there's senior living just opposite this project on River Street. The existing site uh contains a, an old church building that was converted to childcare and preschool about ten years ago? Two thousand twelve, thirteen years ago, it's been operating there ever since. Uh, it's been a good operation, there have been no complaints. Um, and then they've, it's come time to expand and update the facility. This is a image of it on the north elevation along River Street, you might recognize the unique uh character there. It was built back in nineteen seventy roughly. And that's the driveway entrance that's currently being used. These are images of the surroundings. Um, this is the south side of the property on Santa Fe Street. So you can see it's a residential neighborhood, not a lot of massing, uh, the buildings are set back pretty significantly. There's a surrounding perimeter fence on that south side. This is along the east perimeter along Surrey Way, again you have the vinyl fence on the outside, vines and trees and no real massing of structures. This is the proposed site plan. This is showing that the property will be redeveloped in two phases. Uh, that orange indicates phase one, so that's the new building construction. That's the six thousand three hundred fifty-one square feet of classroom building. There'll be new playgrounds along that east perimeter and the parking lot will be reconfigured and there'll be a new entrance added to the south along Surrey Way, so it'll be a total of three entrances. Phase two is the remodel of the existing building and the surrounding site and then it will tie in and all operate as one unified operation. The phasing allows for the phase one to be built and to remain in operation in the, in the existing building. So school, kids will continue to go to school there and be in daycare there while they're constructing the new building and then they'll be able to move the kids over into the new building while they remodel the existing building. The existing building is fifty-one hundred square feet, so we're getting north of eleven thousand square feet in total. And they'll be adding a covered vehicle drop off there in the front along River Street. There's various other ancillary changes that are going on here, there's the uh covered trash enclosure, there's changes to some of the circulation uh in landscaping and various other features throughout. The north elevation in the architectural drawings looks like this, that's the existing. This is the proposed, so you can see the add-on there on the east side. And the project as proposed currently includes uh changing of that front facade. We're gonna talk a little bit further about that because some new information's come to light on the building facade there. But this is as it's currently been processed. And that's a rendering of what the north elevation would look like. On the south, this is the south elevation. So again, this is set back pretty significantly from Santa Fe Street, but that's your existing structure. And this is the proposed condition, which shows the building there on the east side being added. The building heights here are getting up to twenty-two feet uh which is below the existing height of twenty-six feet, that's that peak there of the, of the pitched roof that you see in the existing building, which was the former church. This is the east elevation, so the, the properties, um, this faces Surrey Way. That's existing and that's proposed. And this is the west elevation, so the property immediately to the west is single family residential. And that's the proposed condition. This is the overall floor plan, this shows both the building remodel and the addition. So you can see it, it carves up the interior, makes it more efficient, it separates the different age groups. And this is the proposed landscape plan, so there'll be um landscaping throughout along the perimeter. Uh, the total square footage is thirty-eight hundred square feet. The front setback will include artificial turf, shrubs, ground covers and the rear will be adding uh a strip of landscaping, trees, vines along the perimeter fence. Um, and then there are some large perimeter trees you may have seen in my pictures up here on the south, let's go back to that real quick. Those will be retained. So you can see those, especially in the picture there on the right-hand side, those trees are gonna remain. So those will also help to break up the massing and the, and the fit in, the tie-in with the neighborhood. Okay. Overall, the development standards have been met. We went through these um in great detail through the project review and it's compliant with all of the requirements in terms of front set, uh, all setbacks, lot coverage, height, parking, driveway widths. Um, there was a pre-existing legal non-conforming situation. Uh, this goes back into history where the parking lot on the west side was established uh that didn't have a four-foot landscape buffer between the parking and the prob, project, property limits. But since that was a pre-existing condition that was legally established, uh, that was allowed to remain. So that was the only issue, but otherwise everything else is compliant with the result, the development standards. The operations are changing a bit, as I mentioned, they're expanding the uses, so they'll be increasing from ninety students up to one hundred sixty students and they'll be, I believe, from eleven faculty up to twenty-one. And they've accommodated that with the added parking, getting up to forty-seven stalls, that's consistent with the municipal code. They've added another driveway on the south side, so they now have three driveways that will help to disperse some of the traffic coming in and out. Um, and then also the traffic and the operations are spread out throughout the day. So it's not as though all one hundred sixty students come at one time in the morning, it's split up into different groups. So there's like a part-time group and a full-time group um from seven in the morning through six in the evening. Various times where parents are coming and dropping off, so that distribution of traffic helps to alleviate some of the um, some of the um intensity. Uh, as I mentioned, there's also a lot merger, it'll merge these three parcels here into approximately a one point two acre lot. So those three parcels will merge into one. And then I mentioned that some new information has come to light um over the course of just the last few days. Uh, there's a local historian who called and informed us of a condition in which they believe this building may have some historic significance, so it was built around nineteen seventy. Um, and it, we were told that it was designed by a local artist named Hinkley. Uh, so the building was never designated as a historic landmark in the city surveys that were done, the citywide surveys that were done. But over time, uh, it, the building has become uh old, if it's the criteria of being over fifty years old. And some research was done on Hinkley and in his historical records, it does reference that he was in fact a designer of this building. So the predominant character feature here is that front facade with the large stained glass windows and doors. So the project as proposed would remove those, those windows and the door and, and make it a solid wall with their sign. Given that the new, this information has just come to light, um, we've discussed different options with the applicant and they, they would propose a solution that, that could retain this existing condition. And they would just create sort of a faux wall on the inside, so it's not seen as a false emergency exit on the inside. So you wouldn't see any difference on the outside in terms of that predominant feature. In my discussions with the County Cultural Heritage uh Commission staff, they wouldn't otherwise require a historic survey if it's preserving, if it does preserve that feature and then the additions to the building are towards the rear and they don't really affect the integrity of that front building. So that, that's a solution that's in the works right now. Uh, the applicant architect, I believe, has come up with some alternate drawings to resolve that issue just as a proactive measure. Uh, we haven't had a chance to really take a look at those plans. So given this issue that's come to light, um, staff has not recommending approval as was in the staff report. Uh, instead, we're recommending that you do these five things, which is receive the staff report, oral presentation, open the public hearing, receive public comments, provide any planning commission comments, and then continue the hearing to a date certain on November nineteenth, once we've reviewed the plans and come back with a recommendation. And then, of course, any other issues that might be brought up tonight could also be considered. And I believe the applicant may want to present, but we're, we're, we're available to answer any questions. Um, and you can open the hearing, thank you.
I have some questions.
Go.
Um, so, uh, there were a couple of parking spots on the south side of the lot that I don't know if they fully work in terms of turning around and getting out. Like, uh, yeah, if you go to the, oop, just go to a floor plan. Yeah, if you move your cursor slightly to the right, oh. Yeah, right there, yeah, so I'm just wondering about those, I mean, that, that's not like a big uh gripe that I have or anything like that, but I'm just looking at it, it doesn't totally look like it works, for that last spot at least. And then I was wondering about um the requirement for like EV capable spots and um the actual EV level two spots, like where those are.
Uh, those aren't always identified at the entitlement phase, but once they get into the building plan and they do the green building code compliance, that's where they'll identify those particular stalls.
Okay.
Um, this driveway width does meet our standard for, for two-way traffic, even though you only have parking on one side. So it is a little bit tight, um, but I believe the car can, I believe a car can, could maneuver out of that. Yeah, that last spot's a little tight, um, there's a little bit of room there to to kind of angle out toward the northeast, it might take a, it might take a three-point turn.
Yeah.
But the site is very tight.
Yeah.
And because you have kind of this existing condition and they needed forty-seven stalls. Um, this was, this was sort of the most efficient circulation, uh.
Bicycle.
That was derived, yeah.
Yeah. Um, another question I had was, uh, just in terms of noise, are there any sort of like school bells or anything like that?
They, they don't have any bells, we do have a condition of approval in here that speaks to, there shall be no like amplified, you know, sounds.
Oh, okay.
You know, so sometimes they might make an announcement like, everybody line up or, you know, whatever, and so uh, that can be annoying to neighborhoods and so we don't allow any amplified uh noise like that.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
And that's the purpose of having the playground be divided into smaller groups, that way the teachers can actually direct.
Group.
Right.
Sir, may, Brian, maybe, let's finish the staff questions first, then there's an applicant presentation time and as the, you can address the questions directly. Thank you.
Um, and then, yeah, I guess the other question has to do with the um, the landscape materials. Um, I guess, I don't know if this is really a question, it's more of a comment, um, so I can save it until later.
Okay.
I, I just have a quick couple of questions. Um, one, River Street is hugely, gets hugely congested around the rush hour times.
Um, and I know that having it spread out, uh, and this might be specific to the, the applicant,
but um on the city side, where you had stated that there, there shouldn't be any higher increase of traffic, um, what other city concerns for traffic? Because again, River Street is the other thoroughfare that people take to get off the one twenty-six.
Yeah, I mean, it's not that there won't be any increase in traffic, there, there will be increase in traffic uh and it, and it will hit some of the peak traffic hours, the commute times. Um, but it, but the mitigation is, it naturally spreads out by way of the, the operating hours. Also, projects like these are typically, when you have daycare, it's typically what, you know, traffic engineers might refer to as pass-by traffic.
Okay.
Uh, you know, the person is already driving because they're going to work, so it's not always necessarily a new trip.
Hmm.
Um, you know, on the circulation network. But sometimes locally, it adds a new trip to river, as they may have otherwise been on Santa Fe, perhaps, some of that. Um, but it's not an exact science in these cases, but it is considered harmonious with the neighborhood to have daycare. Um, and a lot of the people in the neighborhood most likely would be, like I said, on their way to work, dropping off or taking other kids to another school. So it's not always a, a new trip, a new car trip.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and then, um, talking about, uh, you know, this historic, um, you had said that the applicant and the architect are planning to keep the windows, but on the inside, they're going to be making changes, you know, you know, a faux wall or something, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to, to make sure I understood, so the facade still stays the same outside? We're not demolishing or changing anything on the outside, it's just on the inside, you don't necessarily need windows, you want that extra wall space?
Correct, yeah, I mean, basically, I mean, you can't see in through those windows as it is now, you know, it's on, it's shaded, uh, being on the north side. But uh, the visual appearance that, that character theme will, will stay, will remain as is. And like I said, they'll, they'll build, build out sort of a faux wall on the inside and use it for shelving or what, whatever backpacks, just so it doesn't, doesn't appear as a false exit.
Yep.
And if any of it emergency.
Gotcha.
But yeah, that was something they voluntarily decided to just come forward and do, given that the, the concerns came about. Um, and I did have a discussion with the cultural resources experts who have confirmed that if you're, if you're only modifying the interior and you're not going to affect that exterior, they wouldn't suggest that a historic survey be conducted.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. Because they do, they do promote adaptive reuse of buildings, they don't want things to just sit deteriorated and, and vacant. So it's a good compromise. Yeah.
And so it's not really changing their plans for inside? It's just, okay, we're keeping the outside, we'll have to find potentially a new place for your sign, but.
Right, yeah, that'll have to get reworked, yeah.
Okay. Um, and then the last question I have is, are there anything in the plans? And again, you said not in, usually in this entitlement phase, but for solar, is there plans for potential solar? Or have, has that been talked about?
Uh, it hasn't been discussed, um, but like I said, that will come out in their Title twenty-four compliance.
Yeah.
However, they meet the, their Title twenty-four standards, oftentimes solar gets them a lot of value to meet the standard. So, um, it'll be up to the architect to determine whether that, that's implemented or not. Um, and then I guess we might want to consider whether that affects the historical character too, if you put solar panels on that roof, but, um, it may be okay.
Could be on the south roof.
Yeah.
On the new, new structure.
Yeah, because the south roof will be pitching toward the south, so it could be a possibility, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Going back to the, oops, going back to that, the traffic off of him, um, what are, from seven to six, what are the, how are the groups gonna be divided into, like what age group and how many, like from seven to eleven, one group?
I, I think I'll let, if the applicant's gonna speak, I'd, I'd like to let them answer that one.
Yeah, and the reason why I'm asking is because, as he said, everybody's trying to get off the one twenty-six and they use River all the way down to either Central or Mountain View. And depending on how, what timeframe, people are getting dropped off and picked up.
Yeah.
You're, you're gonna add more traffic to it, whether it's just, whether it's just, just dropping them off, basically.
Yeah.
And my concern is, you're already adding more traffic to it, you're adding kids to the, to the, to the, um, equation, and then also parking out in the street as well.
Right.
So.
Um, well, well, they're not, they're not allowed to park on the street.
To drop them off?
Right, their, their program is to drive in, they have a, the driveway is, uh, is kind of looping through so that they come in, do the drop-off and then go right back out.
Okay.
I mean, you may get some incidental parking on the street, it does, you know, it does happen, because, you know, it gets messy sometimes when parents are dropping off.
Yeah, because you, you have.
But these are little kids too, so they don't, they don't typically get dropped off on the street, I think the parents try to get them up onsite.
Up to the.
Yeah, but I, you know, I'll let the applicant speak to that a little bit more.
Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, it's, we're not saying that it's not gonna add new traffic, it is gonna add new traffic. Um, but again, it's, you know, the mitigation would be to spread it out as much as possible, which is, which is kind of baked into what the project description is, you know, to, to distribute the, the loading.
Um. Would any of the driveway, I'm sorry, uh, would any of the driveways or the parking area, would that be used to drop off kids? Or they have to go through the loop?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I'll let the applicant speak to that, I, I believe they would go through the loop mostly, but you'll, you would probably have times where the parents might pull in and park, walk in, get their kid and walk back out. Yeah.
And, and we, you, they added a, an, an exit and entrance on Santa Fe, correct?
So, yeah, that's.
The idea is probably to spread the traffic now, what you would, you'd have ninety kids being dropped off on River Street only now will, you know.
Correct.
You'll have kind of spread.
Yeah, yes, you have a two-way driveway on, on Santa Fe.
Do you have a photo, um, of the intersection of River and, uh, I'm sorry, I don't know what that other street is called? Uh, at the top, the northeast?
Surrey.
Oh, s-.
Surrey.
Uh, it's, let's see, I didn't capture it there.
Let's see, oh, um, no. Is there a, is it a stop sign or?
Yeah, I didn't capture it, it's just to the left of this, yes, I believe that's a stop.
No, it's, it's a turnabout.
Well, that's right, yes, it's a roundabout.
Oh, roundabout, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm just wondering about kids like walking and crossing the street, if there's like a protected area for them.
Well, I mean, given that that's a roundabout, it is better uh for circulation, because you don't have cars stacking up along stop signs and then you don't have a false census of security for kids to cross at a corner.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so there is, there aren't crosswalks there at that traffic circle. Uh, they're, 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 they're expected to drive onsite to, to deliver the kids. I think how, the oldest age is four? Five?
Does everyone drive though? I mean, don't they walk to school with their kids in this area?
Well, neighbors would, I mean, your neighbors, so, but the majority of our children are under, five and under, and some toddlers at preschool.
We'll wait for the.
Sorry, we'll, we'll wait for the applicants.
Okay.
I just, I just want to make sure that the comments get captured.
Yeah, yeah, no.
They don't get cap, picked up on the mic, so it doesn't get included as part of the record. There's about three questions that I think I'll let the applicant speak to.
Okay.
Yeah.
And real quick on the historical, is it just the glazing that's considered, or is it the whole front facade, the plaster, that stone that has to maintain, stay?
Uh, I, I don't know, we didn't get into that, that level of detail, but, uh, you know, that's, that's not a commonly seen structure. That roof height and pitch and that stone veneer and that glass, I think altogether comprises one component, you know? Comprises one visual element of the building, I don't think we would piece out bits and parts of it. We would say, you know, basically leave that as is, yeah.
Any other questions for staff? All right, appreciate it.
Yeah, sure.
Have the applicant.
Yeah.
Well, thanks for your time, I, I, I know you guys had questions, but I, just finishing up the question, talking about the playground and the amplified sound. The whole idea behind this is so that each teacher basically has a playground to be able to watch over her kids, so there wouldn't be a need for bells or anything like that, the teacher has direct contact with her kids at all times. It's also a state requirement that the teacher be able to visually see the kid at all times, uh, when they're outside.
Hi, I'm Melissa, I'm the site director of the facility, so I'm there all day, every day. Um, as you guys know, Filmore has grown tremendously and most of our families are the new families that are coming to Filmore, that have nowhere to take their children. Um, most, and, and in that whole development in River Street, Santa Fe, that whole area. Um, so they're already driving in the area already as it is, because they are going down River Street, going to the new housing development, dropping off their children at Rio Vista or wherever, their older children. Um, adding the, the back, um, Santa Fe entrance exit would help tremendously, because right now it is, there is a lot of congestion, um, on River Street, you know, coming in and out of there, because everyone tries to get away from the stoplights on, uh, the one twenty-six, so they come around and they, they use our street. So I think adding that would only benefit even our current situation, adding, you know, adding that as an exit, because they're going to those homes already as it is. Um, our children are younger, we do have a school age component for after-school care, so related to the question as far as drop-off. So related to the question as far as drop off times, um it varies from the morning, like between seven and nine. But then we do have like an afternoon, um one o'clock to two o'clock, depending on the child's age. When they get out of school, they come to our program at that time. So there's a big chunk of our numbers that's in the one sixty number that is for our after-school class. So it would be during the afternoon where there's not a lot of traffic for morning going to work or at the end of the day. Um and then there is, and then at the end of the day, everyone gets off work anywhere between three, you know, to six o'clock, two thirty. It ranges very broadly. And we do have a part-time program that is just in the morning. And then those kids get picked up at eleven forty-five. So it's it's all throughout the day at different times. It's not everybody at the same time.
I think the planning commissioner's questions was on pickup. Is it occurring around five P M or six P M?
Anywhere from two thirty, like we use children or actually eleven forty-five, one class gets out at that time.
At five P M?
Eleven forty-five A M, like one class will get out at that.
So I'm asking at eleven P M, when people are coming home from work, are are people, are children being picked up at that time?
At five P M?
Yes.
Oh yeah, there's there, anywhere from two thirty to six o'clock, from when we close.
So they will be adding to the traffic at that time. Thank you.
But I just think it's important. I know when you guys see how many students were proposing, it's not a hundred and sixty students all picked up at that time.
Right.
It's because it's it's staggered throughout the day.
No, that that's.
And also wanted to know too, a lot, the majority of the families that we have now are multi-children families. So it's not one family picking up one child. It's, for example, it's a family with an infant, a preschooler and an after-schooler. It's one car picking up three children, four children, potentially.
And currently you have these same times of pickup. For your ninety kids now, you still have these um staggered uh ending times where people are coming to pick up the kids. So.
And the and the reason, one of the reasons why we wanna expand is because we have multi-children families who we no longer have room for their other children. So it's just basically gonna be accommodating mostly the families that we already have now.
It's a great problem to have. Our waitlist is humongous. And we have people, when they're pregnant, calling to get on our waitlist, because it takes so long to get into our program. We have, I've recently had a preschooler that I'm enrolling, but they've been on our waitlist since they were an infant. Because we just don't have the space to serve more families and Fillmore has grown so much. We're just, before they're even moving to Fillmore, they're calling and asking to add to our waitlist, because they're gonna be moving to Fillmore.
I'd just like to add, it's it's usually their deposit is right next to the pregnancy test, because they're.
So you have the full sixty right now?
We have ninety.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're ninety. You have a full ninety right now.
Uh and also, I mean, you guys mentioned about the the drop off uh and kids walking across there. We do have families that walk their children to school. It's very minimal. Most of our parents actually have to go to work and come back from work. So very few actually walk their children to school.
Is the parking mostly utilized for staff?
Our front parking right now is utilized for staff. Our back is all for drop off. So it, we have like designated, it's all for parents to come and drop off their.
So for my 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 son used to attend A B C, so I I'm familiar with the whole drop off. I- is the system now with the roundabout, will will parents be able to drive in and pick up? Or I know before you had to park and get out and sign out.
Right, they have to sign in and out, but with the new development, we are gonna have electronic sign in and outs. Where if we have the roundabout, we have tablets, parents, you know, we can have somebody designated that's able to assist with that to, you know, speed up the process.
And and that's, I think, uh be more helpful for infants, because parents who drop enough infants, they have to carry. And if it's raining, it's really difficult for them, so it'll, it'll help them.
Regarding the Santa Fe e- entrance and exit, are you anticipating people coming in that way? Coming up through and exiting on River Street and kind of vice versa, coming in on River Street, exiting on Santa Fe?
Maybe, depends on where they're going.
I'm sure if they're already live, they're not gonna go all the way around to go into the front. I'm sure some will come, you know that, but the majority, I think, will be entering probably the front and do the roundabout or exit the back and go around.
Mo- most people that use River Street to avoid the one twenty-six come in on, was it D Street, what kind of where Pescador is at? And they'll take that all the way over to Mountain View and get off. So it really depends on which way the parent wants to go. Uh which way they're going home or which way they're they're coming into.
In in, have you guys studied to see where most of your kids live, their residents? Are they on the south side of Fillmore or more north side? Do you find more of the newer neighborhoods attending versus, or is it a spread out travel?
Pretty much.
It is pretty spread out. Um yeah, I would say like a straight across from us in that neighborhood. And then the new developments, like this way and in front, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I I think it's pretty spread out. Um we have repeat families that, you know, sometimes their 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 children age out, move on, and then they have children, they they end up coming back, so it's.
And now grandchildren.
Not to beat a dead horse, I guess, but my my concern is this, is it's that parking lot with the traffic. Um you have kids, parents, you know, not too long ago in Beverly Hills, a fifteen-year-old boy got ran over at a school inside the parking lot. So that's that's my concern. Because of that, you know, how how are you gonna manage a two-way parking area where they could exit on River or exit on Santa Fe? But you're gonna have people going either left or right if they're coming into Santa Fe. If they're coming in through River and then exiting Santa Fe to the right, to the left, that that's, you have two, you know, a two-way street in a sense. And and that's the concern for me personally.
Obviously, we, you know, we haven't built the parking lot, so we don't know um which way they're gonna go. Just out of habit that you see now, most parents, when they're dropping off, they will usually park closest to the classroom that they're dropping off in. So given the way the parking lot is structured, more than likely, I would presume that most parents are gonna park closest to the building, where they don't have to walk across traffic um to get to their classroom. Um even now, the way the parking lot is, it depending on what time you you're gonna go by, it's gonna be empty, cause the drop off hours are 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 pretty narrow, so parents are gonna drop off, you know, a certain amount of children at a certain time. And those parents are more than likely gonna park closest to the building, where they're not going across traffic. So I would assume that, you know, once the building is built, um and the parking lot's made, they're, that same habit's probably gonna stay.
And in your peak drop off times, it is it, would you say that that parking lot is completely full, or would you say it's twenty, forty percent full? I think, I think we might envision it as a rush coming in and it, you know, we think of the elementary school parking lot, that's, it's like Mayhem in the morning over there. But it, from what I recall, it was never like that when we, when I would drop off there, so.
Yeah, and again, going back, I think going back to that same idea that most of our families have multi-children families. I think it's gonna be just basically the same thing. Maybe adding, you know, a couple more cars, yes. Cause that's the whole idea, is to be able to offer these more spots to more families. Um but in in reality, most families that go have multi-children, so I I don't foresee that much more traffic. But that's why we're adding more parking spots to that.
Are you anticipating in in the roundabout or the horseshoe, um parents being able to kind of temporary park? Get out, drop their kids off, sign out, you know, sign them in and out, and then get back in their cars? Or is this a, you're anticipating kind of a, a receiving drop off and kind of moving forward? Cause again, I'm thinking about people coming in from River to try to turn into the facility. Stopping traffic to um or backing up traffic while they wait to be able to turn in. And, you know, people backing up your, you know, your your area to drop off.
Well, I I think it's, it's gonna be more of a weather issue, like for example, now when it rains, because we have no overhangs, we have to put a pop-up. So parents are actually waiting, because they have to sign in. Um the idea is that every parent that comes into a facility has to sign in. So sometimes they have to wait, right, to get in. So that that cover is gonna be more for that than necessarily parents dropping off as a quick drop off. Does that answer that question?
I have a architectural related question. Um you guys are retaining that cover for the snack area right now? And it's on like the northeast side of the of the project, um on the north facade. And I'm wondering what, I I think it's existing also. Um I'm just wondering, why did you guys keep, choose to keep that in the drawings? Instead of sort of like making a new roof that sort of matches the new building?
Uh are you talking about uh on the playground area now?
Um no, I think it's on the opposite side of the site. There's like a wood-framed um sort of like sloped roof structure, and it says like snack area or something like that on the plans. Okay. And I can tell you which sheet number.
A two point one on the top elevation one. This covered snack area.
Yeah, or if you go to A seven point two, also it shows it. It's like kind of rendered in like a pink. Um it's on the northeast side of the site.
Seven point two?
Yeah, A seven point two. It's like the rendering of the north facade. Yeah, the covered patio on the northeast side. And I'm just wondering about that, because it's like, I think it's a remnant of. Yeah, exactly that.
So we we chose to to keep it, because we do, uh something the state uh wants us to be able to do is have outside time with children, so that can be used as an outside classroom, because it's a covered area. So there's seating area for them and different activities the teachers have with them outside.
I I understand the the use, but I'm I'm wondering why architecturally you chose to keep that. I I think it's an existing structure that's there, that kind of doesn't really match with the new design. Um would that be something that you could consider revising with a different, maybe like a pitched roof that matches the A-frame?
Yeah, I mean, if if it's something that that you guys would adjust, then we wouldn't see an issue with it.
Okay. And then another question I have has to do with the um, the uh the artificial grass in the front. Um right now, I think it's like there's a few olive trees there that are pretty mature and some like, I I think it's gravel or maybe it's mulch. Um I'm just wondering about that choice to go with artificial grass versus like other plant materials that are more like uh drought tolerant and natural rather. I mean, it's like the first thing you see on that street's pretty prominent.
I I believe the landscaping is a mix of artificial and real living plants. It's just like kind of break up the color scheme. It's a lot of natural kind of shades of brown. I think the green would help. And it's not just gonna be the cheap artificial grass, it's gonna be the real looking, I guess, artificial grass.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, like, as opposed to having other green actual plant materials that are, you know, that could be drought tolerant, not high maintenance or anything like that, I would just encourage the use of like less petroleum-based materials. You know what I'm saying? And also having real plants psychologically for kids and anyone who really looks at the site, I would, I would recommend to use that instead. Um I mean, I, there's a lot of artificial material, like all the playgrounds are like a rubber-based material. And so I think more natural materials being introduced as buffers, that that would be good.
That's something we can consider.
Okay. And that's, that's all my questions.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So should we, I forget what did.
We have to give comments right?
Comments and then.
Yeah, I mean, the the salient changes that I'm hearing that are recommended is that the applicant consider architecturally treating the snack area, such as a piff pitched roof with the same asphalt tile on the top, just to blend it in. Uh consider removing the artificial turf and use more of a natural landscape in the front.
Yes.
Uh green it up, um sticking with the drought tolerant and the wheelow requirements. And uh and then staff's suggestion was that we reconsider the architecture in the front facade for historic purposes.
I do have some other suggestions as well and comments. So um for me, you know, we did talk about the the historical significance of that main showpiece window and then the A-frame structure of the sanctuary building. Um I think that there are some, you know, other considerations that should be made between like that transition between the new building and the existing building. Cause right now, all the roof pitches are, I don't really see like a rhyme and reason. That there's not like a clear like rhythm or, you know, trying to really match what's there or be distinct. And right now, it's somewhere in between there, and I think it's a little awkward where the two buildings touch each other. Um with that said, I think the drawings are really clear and really good, so thank you. I I really appreciate that. And I also think that there is a great need for this type of program. So I'm all for the use change to, you know, and the merger. I'm just concerned about these few architectural issues. Um and then, yeah, like I said, the roof pitches, I I think there's a little bit of um awkwardness with that right now. At the two buildings coming together, where there's that big lot of air conditioning mechanical units. Um and, you know, right now, the the main architectural feature, which is that A-frame structure, has the flagstone at the base. And I really only seeing it reapplied at the drop-off zone. Um I'd like to see that also maybe at that snack covering covering area. Um really like a motif that can ground the building and continue, so it it really looks like one big building.
Excuse me, okay, um let me see if I can understand that, cause I want, I'm writing this down. On the exterior elevation, you'd like to see the um more use of the flagstone at that particular area you just stated?
No, not on the A-frame space, but the, you know, there's the pop-out for the drop-off, which has it at the base of the columns. And then there's that other pop-out, which is that covered snack area. I think all of those should be similar language, architectural language. Um and also that drop-off area has a hip roof, which doesn't occur anywhere else. And I don't think that really signifies like this is the entrance. Um and I think there should be a hierarchy of these different elements. So that, you know, maybe at one end where that snack area is, it balances the other end where the existing A-frame structure is. Um so and then the middle is maybe more visually subordinate. Um and then also, there's a lot of vinyl fencing happening. Uh I don't think that adds to the project. I would look for something that is more compatible with the architecture of Fillmore. And um, you know, kind of elevates the architectural integrity. Um maybe like a flame resistant and rot was it resistant wood material, like redwood or Epe, which still provides the privacy. Um or there is like an architectural mesh called out on the trash enclosure. That could be an option, something that plant materials like vines can soften up and fill in. Um I'm a little confused about the lighting fixtures. There's like a solar um parking light shown and then uh looks like a sconce. Um I think the lighting needs to be of the nature of the neighborhood and of Fillmore, which is maybe like a lantern type, a barn-style light, um with like a color temperature that's appropriate for a residential zone. So something warmer, like a twenty-seven hundred Kelvin. Um and then also, a lot of the trees that are getting removed, I know that there are some being replaced, but there are only twenty-four inch boxes, which is. And then also a lot of the trees that are getting removed, I know that there are some being replaced, but there are only twenty four inch boxes, which is, I mean, there's big mature like olive trees getting removed. And I would like to see at least forty eight inch boxes getting replaced. And like I said, yeah, the synthetic materials, just like a lot of petroleum based like vinyl and the, you know, fake grass. I, I don't think that blends with the character that we're trying to go for. And that's all I have.
Real quickly, before we have other commissioner comments, we would normally take public comment, but I believe there's nobody from the public here aside from the applicant that's here to comment. So I just wanted to state that for the record before we have more commissioner comments.
I, I think really my only comment is that I like when people are, are taking their, their business and investing in it. And, um, this is a absolute, just like Commissioner Connolly said, this is an absolute, uh, right use for, um, for the property and for the building. Uh, I can, I can see her architectural things. She'd be more the expert on, on the architectural side of it. I can see where potential some of the, uh, materials used are for cost. And, and to speak to like the vinyl fencing, um, I think the, the entire neighborhood and the new neighborhoods in, in Fillmore out in the bridges, are all using the vinyl, um, fencing, so I don't, I don't necessarily know if it will change, you know, where Fillmore is currently, um, for at least the vinyl fencing. I, I, I think I agree with some of the, the plant usage. Some of the trees have been there for, forever and we know that in order to potentially build some of the structures, they're gonna need to remove them. But replacing them with, with smaller, um, kind of removes those, uh, historical or, um, you know, size wise on the property.
And shade, you know?
Right, a- and it gets hot in Fillmore, you guys, and it's already existing, so you guys already have, um, that, uh, knowledge that outside shade is king during the summer months. So, uh, yeah, I'm.
Um, I, I, I agree. I think it's great that we're expanding. I have a great program over there. Fillmore is lacking in childcare and we need it, so I'm, I'm all for that. And, you know, I do agree with Commissioner Connolly on, on a lot of the architectural things. I do understand that there, you gotta balance architectural and cost, uh, especially in this economy currently. So, so I, I would agree that we should take the consideration as you guys are looking through the historical aspects and how that all plays out. If we could beautify the building more, I'm, I'm all for that. So whatever suggestions, when we come back in November, you know, we're, I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing those.
Can we summarize? Should we summarize?
Yes, I took some pretty good notes. First of all, we're, it sounds like everybody, uh, right now is in favor of this type of project. We'll wait until you vote on it in November. But you did have some comments. Number one, address the southerly parking space. Number two, um, wait, before I begin, uh, what these comments that are saying, it came from you. City staff will work with the applicant. They may not be able to do every one of these items. But we will cover it on November nineteenth, whether they can do it or not. So number one, the parking on the south side. And number two, solar, um, solar panels. Number three, you liked some explanation on the traffic, uh, drop off, uh, the traffic route and circulation. We can come back and explain that to you. Uh, number four, uh, you like us to explain whether a crosswalk would be needed. Number five, you'd like to save that architectural feature, uh, in the front facade. Part of the, number six, uh, part of the, um, traffic explanation. You'd like to have an explanation of the parking lots and the drop off area. Seven, um, you would like to pursue a pitched roof where the back patio cover is now. Eight, um, possibly replace the artificial turf with drought tolerant plant material. Nine, uh, pursue architectural transition between the old building and the new building, see what we can do there. And then ten, uh, Commissioner, uh, Connolly's identified, um, things from light fixtures to tree size, uh, define an entrance, identifiable entrance. Possibly, uh, exchange the vinyl fencing to wood fencing. And, um, uh, architecturally treat the mechanical and air conditioning area to so, for it to be screened. And also, um, extend the flagstone on the base of, um, of the facade. Those are the comments that I have from you. We will work with the applicant, see how many of those we can do and we'll come back and prepare on November nineteenth.
Do we set a, a motion to continue the public hearing? Do I have a motion to continue the public hearing to the next scheduled planning commission meeting of November nineteenth?
I'll make the motion to continue that item.
I second.
I'll second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes four zero, so we'll continue that. All right. Moving on to item seven, reports and communications, seven, eight, planning commission brief reports. Any commissioners have?
Um, I just have a quick, um, report. Um, I attended, uh, oh my gosh, let's see, October sixteenth, so last week, um, the housing conference for Ventura County. It was really cool to see what is happening statewide. There were some good presentations from, uh, Dr., I'm gonna butcher his name, Jamshid Damui. He's a, um, a economics professor at, I believe, Cal Lutheran. He had a, a great presentation and then there was another keynote speaker, Chris Allen from Strong Towns, which was, um, really informative. I think they have a lot of good, um, ideas coming out of their organization. But, um, met with some, um, designers and builders who are actually looking at some properties, uh, here in Fillmore. They're trying to still work out funding from themselves, um, before they move into the next stages, um, before coming to talk to city staff. But it was, it was good to hear that, you know, there's some interest in revitalizing some of the properties because they were talking about their existing properties that they were wanting to revitalize, so it was nice to hear, um, hear that, so. But it was a good, good presentation.
Thanks for that. Any others? Move to seven B.
The planning technician and the assistant community development director myself attended the state of California's American Planner Association Conference. That was very good in Monterey. That was nice. But we learned a lot about the new housing laws that are being proposed and other kinds of laws that are being proposed from the state of California. Just a tear off from what you were saying about housing. And they're doing everything they can to create streamlining processes, which means whatever rules and regulations we have now, begin shedding them off. And we've been doing that for probably about the last ten years. It was nice to meet other planners, uh, cause we don't get to do that very often. I send you all, uh, emails of photographs of status of projects. I hope you enjoy those. I'll continue to do them. So the subdivision called the Bridges, that's the common name. It's expected that that will be done in about December twenty twenty six and they're, they're constructing the bike path right now. You're not supposed to use it, the bike path while it's under construction, but people are. I believe it should be done by February, uh, twenty twenty six. It should be done about that time. I've also sent you all, um, an email, uh, regarding the downtown, uh, plan. It started, I think in nineteen eighty seven, the city council, uh, wanted to re-energize downtown and, and they asked architectural students from Cal Poly fifth year to come and do what's called a charrette. It's just a two day jam session where they looked at three items. The storefront along Central Avenue, the rear facade, uh, along the parking lots, and then how do you treat the railroad tracks? I sent those to you. Please take a look at them. And I will be throughout the year sending you information about the downtown. Because the city council, uh, is providing, is, is interested in continuing to push downtown. And help and assist downtown where they can. I'm not exactly sure where it'll lead, uh, but I do know the downtown specific plan was created in nineteen ninety four. So it might be time to refresh in that, but I'm not sure if that's where it'll lead. The city council did give direction to change, uh, the zoning ordinance for, uh, downtown pertaining to retail. We'll start that process and that process, uh, cause it's a zoning text amendment, will need to go to you at a public hearing. You'll make a recommendation and then it goes to the city council. And we'll start that process, uh, pretty soon. But, um, I will be feeding you information to teach you as part of the training about downtown, as well as I'll start looking at the, um, general plan. That's a very comprehensive, long-term project. With Brian's assistance, the housing element is now certified. You guys have finished that a long time ago. We've submitted that to the state of California about seven times. It took us about three to four years to get it through the state of California. And, uh, so that is very good news for us. We've already completed three programs in the housing element. The state of California said you, I think four, four programs. You have to complete four programs before we certify you and we did. So that, that required a lot of rezoning and all the stuff which you were a part of. So we're well underway on the housing element. And, uh, so that's good news for all of us. I'll take any questions that you might have.
Are there gonna be any plans or I don't know if it's in the pipeline for, um, like hiking trails?
No.
No.
The hiking trail, like hiking through the mountains? Or bicycle paths?
You know, you can go down like under where the river is. Is there a path or anything?
No, it, that's not in the city limits. So I go by our jurisdiction boundary and I stay within that, so there are a bunch of rabbit trails where people go down, they make their own little trails. But, I mean, that's not in city limits. We do have a master bike path plan within the city limits.
Yeah.
When they complete that bike path in the bridges, the city will have eleven miles of bike paths. That's one of the most in the county. So, um, we do, we will have that.
Okay.
Quick question, there, there was a Santa Paula to Fillmore to Piru plan?
Thank you. I, I completely forgot about that. I spent a lot of time working on that and I'm on the committee and Brian is also on that committee. It's a bike path following the railroad tracks, uh, from Ventura all the way to Piru. The idea is to have the same type of bike path they have from Ojai to Ventura. We like to create a plan. You have to have a plan first before you see state funding or federal funding. So the Ventura County Transportation Commission is creating that plan. They're asking all of you and the public to begin commenting on it. So if you go to their website, you'll see it. Please start making comments. I've made comments to it. I have two comments, a ten foot wide bike path isn't enough. Uh, I'm learning it should be thirty feet in width, fifteen feet for a, a bike path. And then the remaining, it could be an equestrian trail or a vehicle turning or whatever. You need all thirty. And then, um, the second comment I made is that it needs to be tree lined. You need trees on each side to provide shade, but, cause boy, it gets hot when there is no shade around. Those are my comments. It's my personal comments, but please take a look, look at that document. Within the city of Fillmore, they're looking at various routes to get through the town. There are three or four routes we're drafting up. They haven't decided on which one they want yet. They're looking at the most inexpensive, hopefully. But that'll be a very good trail if it's ever developed. A lot of it's already developed in the city of Fillmore. They've acknowledged it. With our eleven miles of bike pass, so within the city, they, they don't have to do too, too much.
So it might incorporate all the new bike path down in the bridges, our existing bike pass?
Yeah, they're looking at, um, completing our, our gaps. So we have a big gap along the Santa Clara River, uh, underneath or near Highway twenty three. And so we have bike paths that extend all the way to Sespe, but then it stops. It stops right at the Bridges subdivision or, uh, the KB Home project, right? We need to connect it. Once you connect it, you can go from the Fish Hatchery all the way to Sespe Creek. Without getting involved in streets and stuff like that. Yeah, we have what's called class one bike paths in city Fillmore. So, I mean, that's the best that you can have. So we have a premium bike path system. So they're looking at fixing the gaps and connecting them. We have other gaps that they will be looking at too.
Um, and then my only other, um, comment, and, um, this might be VCTC. But it looks like they've been doing work on the railroad, uh, bridge off of, what is that?
Over Sespe Creek?
Yeah. So.
I don't know anything about it, but I know it's approved and they have an incredibly aggressive schedule. Which, I, I don't know it, but I know they have it approved and I, I didn't know they're starting work on it.
Looks like they've diverted
Nice.
The, the creek and looks like they're, you know,
Wait, it's approved.
Aggressively.
It is very aggressive schedule, so it's approved. And, uh, and they're supposed to be starting construction, so you'll see things move quickly if they go by that schedule.
Actually, I want one last, um, I saw the email regarding the traffic. I saw the email regarding the traffic because of CBS and, and rioting. Is the city gonna do anything about that?
Not really.
No?
I mean, I mean, isn't that, I've tried to explain to city council and to the, uh, downtown merchants who are complaining about lack of parking, like that's a pretty good sign. Yeah, that's, it's good to have. So what had occurred was riot aid went under and, uh, all their customers are now using CBS, which is downtown and we have now a parking problem. And now you have people downtown. That's a good thing. In the downtown specific plan, so please start taking a look at that. There's a chapter, I think chapter eight, which is a parking plan. We have four or five parking lots. We developed two, uh, we have more to build, uh, but, um, take a look at that particular plan. Those are all long-term plans, but the city doesn't have, and I haven't been directed to correct any parking right now.
All right, with that, we'll move to eight. We'll run this meeting till the next regular scheduled planning commission, November nineteenth, twenty twenty five at six thirty PM. Uh, we'll adjourn this meeting to the next regular scheduled planning commission, November nineteenth, twenty twenty-five at six thirty PM in the city council chambers.